Okay, now we are going to leave comments on reports from the board of education. Does anyone have anything you'd like to say?
I do. Um, first of all, can I ask Russ Randazzo if he'll come up and talk to me?
No, well, we can let it happen because it's not only you don't just have him come up.
Because I had to ask him a question.
Both of you are allowed to maybe even ask.
All right, well, first of all, can we ever get that safety chair for the, um, for the middle school?
Okay. Mr. Hagen, I'm going to stop you. I don't think it's fair to start questioning staff when you haven't checked, well, I'm sorry, you aren't ready to ask questions right now, but maybe you can ask generally to ask.
Well, he's ready, I mean, we've been back and forth with emails. I mean, this is not nothing new.
You're asking for the decision time and then the decision time.
Okay. And Mr. Skinnell, did we ever get the sa- uh, the safety chair?
Yeah, I think we're, we're expecting it to come in any day now. We never wanted it. And it, and the Friday mailing, um, after, after the last board meeting, when this question was asked, we checked, um, and it was ordered and it was, um, you know, the board was informed that it was expected within a couple of weeks. So, uh, we're, we're still on that and it hasn't been ignored. We, we ordered it and, uh, we responded to the question that was, uh, that was.
Okay. Also, second, um, I was fortunate enough to attend the steel, the middle school and the high school Christmas concert, which was excellent. However, I have some concerns regarding the high school. I mean, the students and the teachers are literally dangling off the end of the stage. So what I want to do is set up a meeting with Russ Randazzo and a few other maintenance staff members to review the drapes in the high school. So these drapes could be pushed back six feet, which will give them six feet at, at the end of the stage, it will give them more room to speak. Therefore, we don't want anyone to fall, so therefore they will have enough, uh, room during concerts. Because I also witnessed this last year and it was a concern of mine last year as well. So this year really solid- well, actually a couple of weeks ago, really solidified it. So that, that's something very important that I want to see and I want to get it done. Because I don't want to see anyone fall off that stage. So this month, I want to set up a meeting with the Russ and maintenance or whoever it may be to go see exactly what can be done about the drapes in the high school. Okay? All right, that's it, thank you.
Any other? Uh, I have a pleasure of attending a couple of the, uh, holiday concerts as well, the one at the high school I went to, uh, Holiday Two, which, uh, was absolutely fantastic. And it was, the, um, wing symphony, uh, performed a tune that, uh, was composed by a twentieth century composer. And it was a really fun treat. The composer's daughter was in the audience and came up and spoke to everyone, uh, about how thrilled she was that our wing symphony was performing her father's work and, uh, how impressed she was with the performance. So it's not only, uh, she's doing a wonderful job in terms of their musical presentations, but I'm, I'm impressed that the, uh, the teachers too are really stretching the, they're stretching their abilities, they're, uh, looking for new and more challenging pieces of music. And it was really nice to see. And, uh, I also attended the mentoring and key breakfast at the high school. That happens to be a program that, that is just terrific. It has, uh, increased over the years. Uh, it started out to be primarily a high school program. It's been, uh, spread down to middle schools and is now very active at the elementary level as well. And I think just judging from the, the students at the high school who are meeting with their mentors, uh, it's obviously very successful. Some of the people have mentored the same students over years so that they really are able to develop a relationship with them and, uh, and it's obviously beneficial for, for both sides, so it's great.
Um, I was also at the, the high school concert with Mr. Do Hagan and was also, uh, impressed with the, the students that performed there and the, and the difficulty of the music that they were performing and the fact that they, they did it flawlessly was, it was great. And that hallelujah chorus they did at the end where they invited people, the alumni off was just incredible. If you haven't, this is the first time, I don't have this kid in high school, this is the first time I went to a high school concert, um, this holiday concert, and it was just, it was incredible. Um, I also attended two of the, uh, Meadow concerts and the sixth and eighth grade holiday concerts, equally as good as the high school concerts. Um, the kudos to the, to the music department and the teachers at those schools, they were fabulous. This is the first time in eight years that I did not attend a Plaza concert. It was sad in me, uh, but I'm sure that was incredible knowing that musical staff had here at Plaza as well. Um, and if you, uh, are interested in, as we said last time, uh, playing in the Baldwin for Children basketball game on Saturday, um, I've instructed the coach that he can play as little as he wants. There are quite a few people on the team that are, uh, much better than I am and younger than I am, as I found out in practice. Um, but come on down, it's, it's for a great cause and, uh, hopefully, you know, we'll see you there.
That's, that's the one on the.
Saturday, it's, uh, no, it's this Saturday.
Oh, that's this.
The eleventh, at the high school, I believe it starts at six, at the fish, so, uh, it should be fun. It's a funny group of guys that, that I was planning.
Right, and I think it's more than a basketball game, I think it's a musical, uh, concert and all that.
Joe, you're going to be playing, I'm going to be coaching.
I'm going to be coaching.
Yes, I am.
Um, okay, any other, anything else from the board? Okay, yes, turn it over to the public. Uh, we're going to be a half an hour of comments and questions from the public. We're going to ask you to limit your comments and your questions to three minutes or less. Please, if there are more people left, I'll pass for, I'll put it in passing. All right, and there you go. Please, uh, rest your hands in the air in case we forget that.
Hello? Hello? Okay. Uh, first, I just want to take a look and I see a lot of people who I know here, especially many, many, many teachers. So, um, guessing a lot of them are going to have the same comment, so I decided to jump the gun and come up first, uh, for a comment that was brought up at the last meeting, which I was fortunate enough to attend. And I think out of fairness, I wanted to give a chance to Ms. Roborey Nargone to.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Oh, there was a change?
It's always been.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Ms. Roborey, a chance to, to comment on the, uh, what's it running there? I think people misunderstood about the one fantastic teacher. So I thought before you had a chance to expand in fairness, that you should get some factual information of somebody who's been through the school system many, many years. Uh, I'm fortunate enough to deal with seventeen straight years of Plaza, who has many, many, many fantastic teachers. Okay? Uh, I do feel, I do feel if, uh, any of the board members who actually participated in a lot of the events that we have within the school district, besides the plays, it's the PTA meetings, community chairs, community events that we have, you would see a lot of these school teachers spending their personal time to benefit our children. But then I thought about it, as the least educated person probably in this room, you probably just don't get it. So I'm going to be fair to say to you, only having elementary school children, with no disrespect, you haven't had the fortune yet, hopefully, of your kids benefiting from the middle school program and the high school program. And I can tell you of two boys who graduated high school with honors, one who just recently graduated college, hopefully he'll move out soon, and, uh, second, who just started, finished his first semester in Binghamton, who I believe understands a very good school and got into the engineering program, all from help. All from help from this school district. So I think it's very unjust and unfair if the comment was made and probably misunderstood that all the fantastic teachers that Baldwin has to offer. Now, let's be clear, and people who know me, I'm going to call it like it is, there are some who might not be up to grade. But out of fairness, that's in any profession.
That's exactly what.
Okay? So, good, I appreciate that, that's great. But so all I'm saying is I think maybe just a little clarity needed.
I would, thank you.
Perfect, no problem, I just wanted you to clarify.
Thank you.
And lastly, I would like to mention, for those who don't know me, I want to again tell you who already know and who don't know, thank you very much for what you've done for my children who graduated and my children who are still, my two girls, who are still in the school system, and you guys are doing a great job with them and I very much appreciate it. So thank you very much. But please go ahead.
So, I guess I'm glad you brought this up because, um, first of all, all of the meetings can be seen on video. So if you want to see the way a statement comes out in the context of something, you can go onto the website, click, like, recorded meetings or something, and it brings you to sort of a YouTube kind of page, and you can watch the whole video.
Which, which I did, thank you.
And, and I said exactly what you said, that not every teacher is a fantastic teacher, just like not every doctor's a fantastic doctor.
Right.
But the context that just came up was in the discussion of a class size policy.
Correct.
And I've wanted that on the agenda every time because I'm in favor of a class size policy. I believe that class size matters and that especially with things like the common core now and all the extra expectations and differentiated instruction and kids that need here and there, that to have, uh, large class size is impossible. And maybe I didn't say it the most eloquent way because some of the other board members, um, were saying, they were citing studies that, well, actually it's not really class size, it's the teacher. And I was trying to make the point that not every teacher is a fantastic teacher, which, looking back, I think even a fantastic teacher who has an immense class size and the common core expectations and this educational reform, if that's what you want to call it, coming through, it's, it's virtually impossible to meet the needs of every child. And I think it's really important that we implement a class size and we have a class size so teachers can teach our kids properly. So that was the context of it, is for me arguing to have a class size in place because a class size policy, some of you may not know that currently there is no class size policy in place. There's no limit on the number of kids. Last year, my second grader had twenty-seven kids in his class.
But you know also there's a reason for that.
Well, you can, you know what, and that's what I was saying, when you look at the budget and you look at the numbers, you can see where you want to cut. And the ironic thing is that at almost every board meeting, I have, um, been firmly saying that when we're looking at the budget, I don't want to see any programs and teachers cut. Without teachers and programs, we don't have a school system and we need to look at other places in the budget. So when the other board members talk about budgetary concerns and class size, to me, that's a paramount, paramount issue, class size, to have small class sizes, to have at least a policy so teachers and parents and students know what to expect.
Right.
And so for me, yes, we have budgetary issues, but we need to look elsewhere in the budget. For me, increasing class sizes, cutting teachers, cutting programs, that's at the bottom. I want to look at other places in the budget where there's excess, where we can save. I want to bring in revenue so that, you know, we have the money and we don't have to cut anything. But the point I was trying to make was in the context of class size policy, and maybe I didn't say it the most eloquent way, but.
But now is your chance to say, so my question again is, if you can expand it, do you feel that there's possibly many fantastic teachers?
I'm sure, because when I'm in the courtyard, I hear parents talking about different teachers, oh, I'm not going to say his name, Miss so-and-so is the best teacher in the school, she's great, I want to make it to have this teacher, of course. And like in any profession, you can't have every professional in that profession being fantastic.
Sure, but I think it's a good idea, when you see this kind of headcount, maybe you might want to expand saying, I'm sorry I missed focus, so.
Well, I think it's a better idea, I think it's a better idea if people, well, coming, everyone's in some meetings, like, there's all kinds of agreeing, but if people listen to the whole context and if they know it was in the class size policy and I'm actually on your side, I want things to be better for teachers, I want class sizes to be more manageable, that if you look at it in the context of that and that I was saying, um, and I think one of the points that one of the board members making is like, well, you know, it's really, it's the teacher, a good teacher that's important, that's what we need to be concerned about, about in class size. And what I came back at might not have been put the most eloquent way, but the point I was trying to make is, we need to look at class sizes.
Agreed.
And, and I think that the expectations and demands on teachers to have, like, to deal with kids, you know, way at the low end and way at the high end and have this common core curriculum and all these, this testing, is, is virtually impossible, even for the most fantastic teacher in the world.
Yeah.
So that's all I'm saying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guys, great job, thank you.
Robert Kugel, MAF 979, Van Duren. I'm concerned about the sale of the school district real estate, Sugar, Millburn and Hastings schools. I fear for a fireplace, a fire sale price due to desperation. And a one-shot infusion of money from a school sale is no solution to all the long-term problems. Across from Steel School sits a large empty lot, empty a long time, the former Eckert Nursery, no foundations have been poured. That's an indicator that a developer is cautious about Baldwin real estate. But what do I know, I'm just a lay observer. I suggest the board reach out to a Realtor like Tracy Mala, who fell thirty-five votes short of sitting on the dais with you. The board needs a more objective consultant to counterbalance your broker, whose primary interest is his health space. I'm especially concerned about Millburn's school, the board values recreation, just invested fifty thousand dollars in school yard upgrades. The fields of Millburn's school are very valuable recreational assets for the community. Take that into consideration of its true value. We need long-term solutions, not patchwork, short-term stopgap or anything. Eighty percent of our budget costs are personnel, that's documented on the website, www.baldwinbudget.com. We either cut the cost of personnel or we have to cut personnel. Last month, I suggested a way to reduce headcount significantly in one discipline. Later tonight, I will suggest another area where we can, we can reduce the headcount of excessively costly teacher association positions by fifteen. Just a hint, our neighboring school district Freeport is already executing on this strategy. There's recently been a lot of turnover at the dais. Three years ago, four of our five board members were not sitting here. And we'll have a fifth turnover this July. And there's also been a complete turnover in our top administration these past four years. You've left quite a financial mess by your predecessors. If past is prologue, many of you won't be here four years hence. In your short tenures, be resolved to make a long-term difference so that your successors can deal more freely with the real business of school, that is student achievement, rather than the endless, bad financial choices you've been saddled with by prior boards. Crisis is an opportunity, Carpe Diem. Thank you, Madam President.
Garth McKean, Stanton Avenue, six oh two Stanton Avenue. I've heard so many negative comments recently thrown about here on all social media that I just felt I needed to come and speak to my experience in the Baldwin school district. I went to kindergarten here in Baldwin and I graduated from Wilson High School. I have three daughters, one in sixth grade in middle school, one in fifth grade and one in kindergarten at Plaza. I have never met a more amazing group of people in my life. I've worked in the operating room with green surgeons and cardiac surgeons and compared to teaching, the surgeon's job is amazing. A brain is a brain, but a child is not a child. What these teachers deal with every day, the complexity and the dynamics is just incredible. The night before my oldest daughter's first night of kindergarten, her teacher calls me to call me a very concerned mom with the child who for two years cried every single day going to nursery school and who was going to kindergarten unable to write her name. She reassured me and by the end of the week, the second week of kindergarten, my child who'd never shed a tear come to Plaza, was able to write her first name. That is an effective teacher. The teacher who figured out a way to get an emotional girl with confidence issues ready for middle school, that is an effective teacher. The teacher who brought out the star in my child, that is an effective teacher. The teacher took time from her own nights to stop the flow of tears in my house with a phone call, that is a fabulous teacher. My girls have had six, at least seventeen or eighteen different teachers here at Plaza. Every one of these people has left a lasting impression on the my girls' life. All of them are excellent teachers, wonderful people. This also includes the math teachers, reading teachers, art, music, gym, instruments, the social workers and the principal. Never have one of my kids said to me, I don't want to go to school, Mommy. That effective teacher. I was of course concerned about middle school. All of my dealings with the teachers there have been wonderful. My daughter has thrived there, thanks to the fabulous teachers here at Plaza. Before I had ever even heard the term common core, I attempted to help my third or fourth grade daughter with her math homework and realized the problem was algebra. I learned algebra in ninth grade. When I went to kindergarten, we had a slide in the kitchen and we learned shapes. My kindergarten's going to read books in a few months. There's nothing wrong with pushing our kids to learn more sooner and I wonder how much frustration with the common core is that not that our kids can't handle it, but we as parents can't handle it. And that's not on you, that's on us to figure that out, how to help our kids do their homework. As far as testing goes, no one in my house throws up or cries for the state testing. It's no big deal. I give them a new pencil and I don't even tell them their scores because the scores should not be used at school to value the teachers, that's my opinion. But according to one set of scores, my sixth grader should not even have made high honor award, and she did. And the only reason she missed distinction was because of the OBO, because she doesn't like to practice it. I'm sorry, Ms. Skinnell, that you are retiring. I stand for our district, but I wish you well. Goodbye.
Yeah, I would just like to say very briefly, yeah, all of them up here have this, in this particular or have had certain experiences, we all have different experience with, uh, you know, as other parents. I would love to echo that, um, probably going to give this to a child, perhaps enjoy their family and everything, uh, what they want to do and their content, but we just are younger children, so they're very good at that.
Tricia Wilder, six fifty-five St. Luke's Place. A few years ago, my husband and I were ready to buy our first house. We had many towns to choose from. I grew up in Limerick, my husband grew up in Oceanside. We decided to buy our house in Baldwin and we chose to buy a house in the Plaza sub-district. The reason we decided to do that was because I felt Plaza School had many fantastic teachers. Not that I didn't think all of the schools in Baldwin had fantastic teachers, but I knew for a fact that Plaza did. I knew this because I was able to watch on a daily basis the wonderful ways in which all of the teachers at Plaza interacted with the children. I saw the great work that was displayed in the hallways of the school and I was able to hear teachers teaching inspiring lessons as I walked through the halls of the school. You might think that I'm saying this because these teachers, that these teachers are fantastic because some of them are my friends and all of them are my colleagues. But when it comes to your child's education, you do what is best for him or her. And Plaza was what was best for my daughter Taylor. I just got my daughter's tentative schedule for next year at the Baldwin Middle School and I am pleased to say that she will be in all honors classes. I know that I can thank the fantastic teachers at Plaza School for that. I am proud to say that Taylor went to Plaza and I look forward to the day when my son Shay can go through Plaza as well. And I want to publicly let the Plaza teachers know that I think all of you are fantastic. Ms. Roborey? Ms. Roborey, I was at the last board meeting and I heard what you said. I would ask that in the future, you consider the impact your comments have on the Baldwin teaching community and the morale it creates. That would be graciously appreciated, thank you.
I would really appreciate that, yes. Good evening, board members, happy new year to everybody and a healthy one coming up. Richard Carbonero, Stanton Avenue. I too have four children that graduated from, went through all the Baldwin schools, graduated to high school. I have a doctor, a lawyer, a detective in the New York City Police Department and an anti-crime officer in Charlotte, North Carolina. So I don't really have a lot of issues with the education going on. I do have some issues with the businesses going on. If the Board of Education needs to approve the administration's disposal of a Xerox printing machine by vote and needs the board's approval for the purchase of a tabletop refrigerator, which is probably in the area of three hundred dollars or so, my question is, how does the administration get to spend fifty thousand dollars of the public's money on a project without going through the Board of Education?
Are you talking about the grant money?
Yes, ma'am.
Second, the last couple of minutes?
Yes, ma'am. And that's my question. Under what authority does the administration get to use that money without the approval of the board? And the money is divided up into several different projects or school areas, given none which are for educational purposes?
I think the administration of the business under the school is charged by job definition and by statute, which being the chief operating officer of the district and being responsible for the day-to-day operational system. And each individual expenditure that is made is not required to be included in the budget of by the Board of Education. And it is a, a part and a responsibility that is given to the administration to, to carry out. And we do that, we do that with the drivers of the board, we do that on the training for the students from the board, but the board is not, and it was, we approve fifteen individuals expenditures, uh, the university is, that's what we want to do.
But this is the public's money.
You're not sure?
And the public's money is entrusted to the administration and the Board of Education to handle it and guide it. Under the circumstances with the middle school in such dire straits, with its program being cut to bone, don't you think that fifty thousand dollars would have helped some of those programs a lot better than maybe putting out the purchasing of playground equipment?
I, I think that the administration are collaborating, they're taking much of the time, working together with the, uh, team to, uh, take, uh, the best explanation or the best decision possible, so we use that money at that time.
In light, in, in the area, knowing that the middle school was in dire straits.
I, I, I think that, uh.
I mean, I know you weren't at the helm at the time, but you were sitting on the board.
I was a board member at that time.
Yeah.
And minister, um, so, I, I think that, uh, you know, the competition, although there, uh, the combination of competition, it is fabulous, uh, the best student, the building, the best student, that, uh, because it is a, it's a, uh, I mean, that.
And there is, and there is that authority in the constitution and the bylaws that govern the administration.
The, 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 the stores are charged with, uh, state cooperating with the building and, uh, the, 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 the.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Donna McGugl, I'm here on behalf of the Baldwin Friends of Music, I'm the current co-president. Um, on behalf of Friends of Music, we would like to thank Mr. Skinnell, Mr. Press and Mr. Hagan for their comments about the wonderful holiday concert throughout the district and having sixty-eight students representing Baldwin in the all-county program. Friends of Music is very concerned with the cuts to the music program at the elementary level and how the effects of that program will have on the future. Starting students later in fifth grade will definitely have an effect on the program's success and will we ever have sixty-eight students in all-county again. As we held our membership tables at the various schools in the fall, we heard many comments about the cuts to the third grade Suzuki as well as the fourth grade program. I don't think those effects were seen this year in the concerts because we still had the carryover from last year, but will definitely have effects in the future. We would like to know where you stand on your priority of evaluating the current cuts to the fine and performing arts program in the lack of a director.
I don't know anything about the harmony of the, of the rest of the board.
Uh, because the board's already made it and we did post for a supervisor sixteen year, we were not able to pull that position, we're being, uh, by recommendation to the board that, uh, we continue this to move forward in that direction. And in the meantime, we are being told to move ahead of the position of the sixteen year supervisor of the year. Um, we have, uh, that, we have a sixteen-year-old, a consultant who has been working at the district and, and, uh, Lance, who is after the birthday of New York, they're continuing, the board approved of continuing that relationship with, uh, this year for the second half of the year. Um, so he has been working closely with us, so hopefully he can, um, to be, uh, active towards the arts and music program. Um, also, there's, uh, that, um, the, uh, fellow individual who works out with, uh, sixteen-year-olds, uh, who work for the district, who's, uh, working. who works with the district, who's working in the instruction office at this point, uh, and who has been tremendously helpful also, with some of the changes and difficulties that's been going forward, and then they've been through the news, through the air war, applications to two major companies, and, uh, you know, entering many of the big contests. And so, it's in terms of leadership to the department, I think it's been, uh, the first year of the 16th supervisor, he would be able to, uh, keep the program moving forward, and getting the, uh, the vision, and, uh, after the leadership of the program. And then, in terms of, you know, holding this, uh, this department, I recognize that one of the priorities that the administration has given, um, and developing a process was to develop a process that, um, they, um, you know, first one, kind of a 3.5, but, uh, a couple of the courses, uh, include, um, doing that and, uh, making everything happen to be sure, and as much as everybody, uh, can, uh, and, uh, we have taken that side to, and, uh, I think that we, we're, we're still kind of putting together the rest of the board, to, uh, to the board, to, I think, to be bonded. Um, but, um, I think that we're...
I would also add that, you know, we, as a board, we get, we support many four priorities, and one of their priorities is keeping our arts and music program as good as it is, because I'm sure we took a good part in our brand, you know?
Absolutely.
And we don't want to see that go down, you know? And that's why, you know, you're the first player, and that's one, and that's how it's going, and there's more time to go, and you can take it in the ground, and you know, it's, you know...
And we realize that, and we realize that the concern, you know, we...
Right, we haven't seen the proposed budget yet, I actually, that's coming soon, right?
I think, you know, people putting the rest of the backup together, they promised it to you in January, we're in the season of January, they're hoping you're having a good one.
But I'm hoping that at least fourth grade music is back in there because it has been something we've been stressing to get the programs back in, and that we need to look at other places and find other ways so that we can get the programs back into Baldwin.
Okay.
But I don't know what's happening yet.
Not only fourth grade music, all the programs that were cut.
Yeah.
So we're looking to reinstate all the programs that were cut.
And as a community member and a parent in the district, we definitely appreciate that. But in my role as Friends of Music, that's what, you know, the concerts were wonderful, but we know triple down, it will definitely have an effect. Thank you.
I just wanted to throw in, because I didn't want to be the one person who didn't speak up and not think, and how you guys think I didn't support it. But obviously, you know, my kids participate, I'm very supportive. It was kind of heartbreaking to me when I sat at the Meadow concert and, um, speaking with, um, Mr. Maniani, and he told me, "There's no jazz night." And, uh, and I believe that's the case here at Plaza, and, you know, those jazz kids who start here and up, as those incredible jazz fans did at the high school.
Absolutely.
And Jazz Night is one of my favorite nights here.
And Jazz Night will have a definite different feel this year without the elementary because it is nice to see them grow from the three elementary groups to the middle school group to the high school.
Absolutely, so, you know, we, I, for one, am aware of that, um, you know, we do have to work within the constraints of the budget, because, you know, it is one of my priorities to get those music programs reinstated as much as we can.
Thank you, and let us know what some Friends of Music can do. Thank you.
Railteen Clavins, 718 St. Luke Street. I'm a Baldwin senior high, uh, Baldwin Senior High School senior, and I'm here on behalf of the board tonight. It's an 81-year tradition, and it's a big part of our community. Uh, this year, we have over 230 puggies spent, um, between the teams. Um, it was cut last year, but falling for children was able to fundraise to raise the over $40,000 needed, so, um... Um, we just asked that, do you try to find a way to fit it into the budget for next year? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Francine House, Millburn Avenue. Um, I have not been able to attend these meetings because of classes that I've been taking. And so, I may be wrong, if I am, it's letting you know, but I just need to clarify that there was $50,000 that was spent on playgrounds? Is that true? Um, please fill out this act. Okay, Ms. Karen, is that, is that...
This is why I understand, this was a state grant, so this was, um, basically the United States, that was then, it was corporate, because I may be getting it wrong, that was then a portion of allowing the buildings to be used as a theater. Is that right?
Well, not exactly, if they could fit, but if, uh, you, yes, the individual elementary school buildings, that gets attached to what, you know, so if you for renovation of the school playground in terms of the safety purpose, uh, and then if you use, like, other four elementary schools to, uh, to, uh, yes, the principal of that building, um, that gets to the, yes, the...
So this is, uh, building, by the way, it's a...
In terms of what was that, so...
Okay, I, I don't understand the decision process. Here we have a school, a preschools in our community where there's no, no sports, the music hasn't been cut, and we spend on playgrounds? Like, is something wrong with that? I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm baffled. I can't understand how there are so many mothers and parents out here who's been raising money all summer so that we can keep music and arts and sports so the kids can have something to do, and we go and take $50,000 and put it in a playground? Like, is, is, is that not a problem? I mean, how many kids, and, and, and I'm telling you, if you could have been at the meeting that vulnerable children held at the high school, when they had to make a decision, whether it's a high school kid or the middle school kid who's going to have a theater program, and you merely told me, "We put it on a playground." I, I, I am beyond upset about that. I mean, we worked so hard, so hard for this, this community. And maybe if it could have been put into, like, this, this ground? We need, we need, we need track at the, at the middle school. We need programs for those children. I mean, and then you're cutting lots of music from a young age? Come on, I mean, on a playground, I, I don't have any more problems, I'm done.
That, that's horrible, the only thing I would like to clarify is, uh, the grant was required to be, uh, in, uh, for, uh, for, yeah, but, uh, the grant was required to be, uh, in some of the extended parts, the 2013, so that funding wouldn't have been available for the 2014 school year, due to time, uh, because of how the, uh, 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 uh...
Oh, I just have statements. Hello, everyone, Elisa Kushner, 21 New York Avenue. Um, first of all, in regards to the playground equipment, just to clarify, um, all the things were not known to be cut before, and it was state granted only for the actual playground. Trust me, as the whole scenario of everything, of everything being cut, it was unknown and delegated stating for per school, not for the plays of middle school and high school, or music or whatnot. It was actually money is just put towards the, actually, I'm sorry, I guess that's going to be that's not a... Can I just finish, because I only have two and a half minutes? So, thank you. Okay, great. Um, and second of all, I attended the Plaza winter, and it was phenomenal. I didn't apply all the other ones, but I attended Plaza. And so thank you to all the teachers that gave up their time, the music teachers, Mr. Nardone, Mr. Greer, the principal, staff, janitors, custodians, like everyone else, and every other school, every... And so, which mainly gets to my last and third point, um, to make sure that we continue to look on for the future, so, of what we're seeing now, of trying to hopefully start bringing back things, because, thank you, Mr. Skinnell, we're actually reinstating and listening to my pleas at board meetings, because to have the fourth grade violin, I fought, and you know I fought hard for it to be brought back for a fourth grade violin, so I do want to thank you, Mr. Skinnell, for listening to me and everyone that's on my position to actually bring it back because you could definitely see with Mr. Greer and the concert and everything that went into it was above and beyond. But I don't want this because I have a first and second grader now that are going to want to play soon. And to make sure that these programs aren't cut again, or more so, and that we are starting to reinstate and not backtrack, and we won't be seeing this whole cycle continue and continue, and that we progress, we learn from it, we F'd up, and it sucks, but we have to move on and reinstate things.
Hi, Mary Lyndon New, 1570 Grand Avenue, Baldwin. I'm not the most eloquent speaker, so I don't want to insult anybody.